Good evening, this is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Scioto Township Zoning Board of Appeals, June 16th, 2022. Good evening to everybody. I'll call the meeting to order and ask that Mr. Walsh call the roll. Off here, Culbertson.
Present.
Raimi.
Here.
Walsh here.
Kangas here.
All right, we have quorum and we have everybody present. Next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. I'll include, I see that I neglected to put this on the agenda itself, but I'll include under other, the report of the plain and commission liaison, how does that sound?
All right.
Other than that, can we have a motion for adoption of the agenda?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Kangas, seconded by Ms. Raimi. Call the roll.
I think actually since we're here, I can do it by voice.
You know, it looks like, I think that all motions must be ruled. I think so, yeah. So let's do it that way for the president. Off here, yes.
Culbertson.
Yes.
Raimi.
Yes.
Walsh, yes. Kangas.
Yes.
Okay, motion is adopted unanimously. Next item on the agenda is communications and correspondence. The only communications I have is indicated prior to the motion to a couple of you that there. Swearing out. Do that after this. Okay, it's not on the agenda. The only communication that I've received is from the absent Patrick Shields, who's under the weather and he'll be back next month. I have no other communications or correspondence, does anybody else? Okay, we'll move on to public comment. This is a time for members of the public to speak for up to three minutes on any matter. So we'll pause and see if there is anybody who wishes to make any comments on any matter except for the public hearing which is scheduled for today. Are there any such persons present? I hear nothing, so we'll proceed to the public hearing. And the public hearing today is number, variance number 22001 by Brent Sedlar owner for certain matters. But before we get there, let's swear in anybody who will be testifying today for the public hearing. Mr. Sedlar, you indicated before the meeting that you did intend to say something, so could I ask you to raise your right hand? And I'll ask you whether you solemnly swear to tell the truth and the whole truth.
Yes.
Thank you. The public hearing will be conducted as generally as follows. The chair will open public hearing by announcing the subject of the appeal, the petition by identifying the applicant's name, case number, specified request and general location. Then the chair will summarize the procedures and rules, which I am doing right now. The chair will then call the petitioner or his or her representative to present statements in support of the appeal along with any supporting evidence, after which the petitioner, his or her agent or attorney may present his or her case, including presenting witnesses on his or her behalf. Next, members of the ZBA shall report on their site inspection, if any, any conversations with the petitioner that may have occurred. Next item on the public hearing is that members of the public who support the petitioner can speak and correspondence is read, after which members of the public who oppose the petitioner speak and the correspondence is read. Then the chair may permit the petitioner rebuttal within limits set by the chair and then upon motion the the public hearing will be closed or continued at a particular date and time if it is continued, after which the ZBA deliberates upon the request and decides the issues or the majority of members decide if needed, the issue may be postponed to a future hearing. To ensure that everyone has the opportunity to speak, the ZBA may elect to limit the time permitted for each person to speak. However, that does not appear to be an issue for tonight since only Mr. Sedlar has indicated the desire to speak. So without further ado, I'll call on Mr. Sedlar to present his statement in support of the appeal along with supporting evidence. Once again, this is variance 22001, property ID number H-08-05-186-001, in the Pineview subdivision, seeking their variance to section 36-75 of Scioto Township zoning ordinances, particularly the schedule of regulations for minimum yard setbacks is requested that the petitioner replace the majority of the structure on the existing foundation without expanding the footprint of the existing non-conforming structure, specifically requesting 37-foot front yard and a 43-foot rear yard distance. So, Mr. Sedlar, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I am requesting the modifications, like you stated, to the yard setbacks. What we want to do is renovate our home. We're not asking to expand the home footprint at all, we just want to be able to go up. And the fact that we're planning on renovating more than 50% of it would require us to meet the current yard setbacks, but we want to use the existing foundation. And because we're adding, planning on adding a bedroom, we have to replace the majority or get pretty much all new septic system layout. And because of, there's a few things that make it difficult for us to put the renovation anywhere on the parcel because of the shape of the current parcel, size of the current parcel, which is less than an acre, but it's zone R1, which is supposed to apply for an acre or more. And the existing site layout of the building, it's, the foundation is already there and the home is already on the current foundation. So there's really nowhere else to put. Because we want to, it's currently on a slab and it is a tri-level and there's, we have moisture issues that we want to raise the first floor so that it's on a normal crawl space so that we can help alleviate that moisture issue. And then we're planning on adding 800 square feet to allow for extra bedrooms and bathroom and home office for myself, since I'm working more often now. So that's our plan. I did get letters from our adjacent neighbors saying that they support the variance that we're seeking. They had no problem with the renovations that we're planning.
Yeah, we did, just for the record, we did receive letters submitted by Mr. Sedlar with his package of materials from two neighbors who have voiced their approval. Pamela, I may get the pronunciation wrong, Heinkowski, H-E-I-N-O-W-S-K-I, of 3549 Pineview Drive in Dexter, and also from Thomas Earport, U-R-Q-U-H-A-R-T, of 3522 Pineview Drive, Dexter, Michigan, 48130. Can I ask you a preliminary question, Mr. Sedlar? I don't know whether you have the knowledge here, but I couldn't find it. First of all, what year was your home built?
It was built between 1960 and 1966. We don't have, I couldn't find any accurate records to indicate the exact year. There was nothing in the building, with building permits associated with when it was built. I investigated with the Washtenaw County Building Department and they had no record of anything for our house.
For the record, our materials that are included in the package don't, actually, there's one indication says that they don't know on the table. We don't know that, do we? And the reason I ask is just for general background, but also because it may explain how the home and the rest of the subdivision was even built. It's not a PUD. As far as I can see, I don't think they had PUDs there. But it's non-conforming to the present zoning and Mr. Sedlar has indicated in his package that there are numerous other homes in the subdivision which have setbacks which would be an apparent violation of the current zoning ordinance. If it was actually built between 1960 and 1966, I think that would be prior to the zoning ordinance. I believe. That, because otherwise, I can't believe that this subdivision could even be built. Assuming the accuracy of your calculations as far as the setbacks or the various other residents you have listed in your package. But just for the record, I don't want to make this the biggest issue in the world, but you didn't go out and actually take those measurements. You did it, I assume, by looking at satellite views and interpolating that. Okay, I appreciate that. Okay. I think some of the ZBA members may have some questions for you. Ms. Raimi, would you like to start?
You asked the one question I had. Would the property was built and the existing foundation was located when you purchased the property?
Correct. And when did you purchase the property?
2013. July of 2013. The, how I determined the age of the building was the same aerial photographs in 1960. It was not there. In 1966, the next aerial photograph, it was there. So that's how I determined the age.
Well, you may be right. I, I can't dispute it. I don't know.
I don't have any other questions, this was very informative package.
Mr. Kangas, do you have any questions for Mr. Sedlar?
Not really, I mean, I went through the whole packet, which I thought was very comprehensive. Question, you had the two letters from neighbors. Did you get any others that were in support or?
Yeah, there's a third one that I submitted prior to last Friday and lady said that she would add it to the package.
It was not added to my package. But you can, you have a copy of the letter?
Yes.
If you could bring it forward, do you mind if we keep the copy?
No.
I think it was added to the online.
Yeah, it was added to the online portion, not the physical.
Not our physical one.
Okay, thank you. All right, well then, for the record, I'll, I'm going to mark this as exhibit A. And I'm going to put it in the front of my package so that hopefully Francis can secure this before my before my binder is purged and include that with the record on appeal. And it's a a letter from Charles and Patricia Edelman, actually signed by Mr. Edelman, E-D-D-L-E-M-O-N of 3555 Pineview Drive, Dexter, Michigan, 48130, saying that he is fully in support of his neighbors being approved for the variance. So I'll put that in my binder in the front. If someone would notify Francis, it's there, I'd appreciate it. Ms. Culbertson, do you have any questions?
No, actually, I want to commend you on the, I think you did a good job documenting that this is, I mean, pretty much the whole subdivision has non-conforming issues and I think this is, it's pretty typical when you come in with a zoning and you apply it the closest zoning you can to an existing subdivision. So thank you for that. And I do want to say I did visit the site just driving by, I did not speak with anyone.
Ms. Raimi, did you visit?
I also visited the site but didn't talk to anybody.
Mr. Kangas, did you visit the site?
I had a chance to know, I'm sorry.
I'll say for the record that I did drive by the site to reacquaint myself because Mr. Sedlar filed a prior zoning request some time ago and, but I wanted to go over there and reacquaint myself with it, which I did, but I had no conversation. Mr. Walsh, did you look at the site?
I was out at the site yesterday and did not have a conversation.
Okay. Ms. Culbertson, any other questions?
No.
Mr. Walsh, do you have any questions?
Just a couple of comments. One, just out looking, I mean, if we're looking at it, the neighbor immediately to the east, Anowskis, will be the ones most affected, they're approving of this. There's also significant landscaping barrier between the two properties, given the existing thing is non-conforming. It's nice that they didn't have an issue. And I guess thank you for confirming that your intent is to build vertically and you're not going to have an overhang off the existing foundation infringing further on the setback. Appreciate the confirmation of that. That's it.
Okay. I have a couple other questions. First of all, you submitted a plan here with dimensions on it and the drawing of the area. It's, it's not, the drawing is not signed. Could you tell us who prepared that?
I did, myself.
Okay. Did you take the actual measurements of, I specifically looked, well, did you take the measurements as noted on the sheet yourself?
Yes. The base point of reference was a survey done by our neighbors. It's in between the two homes. So there were land stakes that designated the corner of their lot and that's where most of the survey, or most of the measurements were based on. Besides like the house and that stuff's easy to measure.
All right. And how do you intend to do the actual reconstruction? You're going to knock down the house and then rebuild it?
That's the plan. My father is a general contractor licensed in the state of Michigan, so he'll be doing the, most of the work. But we're planning on removing the full structure above ground and then converting the tri-level portion into, or adding basically two rows of blocks, two rows of block for foundation to raise the structure so it's no longer slab on grade. So there'll be a small crawl space under the single-story unit now. And then the portion that's considered a basement in a tri-level home will be, I think it's roughly 54 inches crawl space on that side. So it will become a conventional two-story home.
Okay. Well, I, I can say that I don't have objection to putting a new house on the same footprint. But I am concerned that we don't go any farther than, that we don't approve anything beyond that because it is a non-conforming structure and under the zoning ordinances, the intention is not to, the way I read them, they're not intending to allow anything to expand the non-conformity. And I'm just a little leery because as you say, you took the measurements yourself and you're not a licensed engineer or surveyor, are you?
Not licensed, no.
How do, administratively, how do we address this, Laura?
For a zoning compliance application, which is what the township will be approving.
Yeah.
So we don't require a builder to submit a drawing for his zoning compliance. A homeowner can apply for his zoning compliance permit. Since he's building on the existing foundation, those measurements, if they're off in your, your motion would be for him to allow him to reconstruct on that foundation as it exists. And so maybe it's not as important, those specific setbacks aren't as important. It's, it's that he's building on the existing foundation and not expanding it further.
Okay.
And I would just say, I think we need to be really careful of the wording. I think it would be on the existing, the existing foundation footprint because they could get into an issue where they had to replace a section of foundation or something.
Yeah, and I, and I don't want, well, we can talk about this later, but okay, thanks, I appreciate it, Laura. And just for the record, I had a very kind of an unofficial discussion with Mr. Luon, who works with Laura, today about the actual measurements. And in this case, the, the actual drawing shows 43 foot, 7 inches for the rear yard setback and 37 feet, 4 inches for the front yard setback. But the request is only for 37 and 43 feet, skipping the inches. Now, and Doug Tolls tells me, kind of, gives a few inches in there for kind of administratively, it's not a big deal, it's a few inches here or there in case, in case it's a little bit off.
Right. And so that's, in the past, this zoning board has done just even. And so 37 gives him those extra inches, 47 feet, 43 feet. If you say 38 feet, he's losing, right?
Yeah, well, yeah.
Yeah, so that's why we just kept the whole.
Well, the only reason, the only reason I bring it up is again, to make sure that it's the existing footprint, foundation footprint and and that's not only for this, this particular application, but and I'm not saying we're going to be tied to this in the future, but I don't want to suggest by our actions, at least in my opinion, that we go beyond the existing footprint. And the inches perhaps not that important. In this case, I don't think they are. Okay, I don't think I have any questions, let me look at my notes. Well, for what period of time do you think this is going to be constructed, Mr. Sedlar?
The current estimate is six to nine months the duration of the construction.
And for the record, as you've explained in the drawing and I think in your, in your submittal, part of the reason for the request is that not only is the permitted septic field taken into account, but there's also a reserve field location that's been approved, is that correct?
Correct.
And that's shown on your drawing. And also for the record, because Mr. Sedlar makes a comment in here that the property was zoned R2, the existing structure would be conforming, but this is not a rezoning request, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. I have no other questions. Do any of the other zoning board members have any additional follow-ups?
I move to close.
Mr. Sedlar, anything further you want to add?
No, I think I've stated my.
Okay, then I would solicit a motion to close the public hearing. Moved by Mr. Walsh, supported by Ms. Culbertson, please call the roll. Off, yes. Culbertson.
Yes.
Raimi.
Yes.
Walsh, yes. Kangas, yes. Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Yeah, with, with, with the existing foundation using the same footprint, I, I guess, I think that actually be a good addition here to rebuild the house, I mean, let's be honest. I, and the only reason I brought up the questions about the existing non-conformity is not necessarily for this hearing, but also in the future, because I think under other circumstances, there may be some problems. So I want to make sure, in my opinion at least, that we don't have any, any expansion of the non-conformity. So otherwise, with the appropriate motion, I would be in favor.
I agree on all points. I think this makes a perfect sense and I think we can
move it forward.
Move it forward, yeah. I have a motion.
I think a comment first.
Sure.
We talked about this in January. I think we've been consistent on permitting change on existing non-conforming footprints as long as the infringement doesn't change, to Tom's point. I think we need to be specific about the foundation because technically the patio slab is a footprint and it's non-conforming as well. And if we just generically say the footprint of the building, we inadvertently add the patio slab.
That would not be my intent.
No, I'm just saying, that's why we need to be specific on, if we go ahead and approve this, that it is on the existing non-conforming foundation of the foundation only.
Footprint.
Yes.
Yeah.
But otherwise, yes, I'm, I'm in agreement.
Okay. I agree with your comment, so. Ms. Raimi, you expressed desire to formulate a motion?
Yes. In the matter of variance 22001, the settler front and rear yard setbacks at 3546 Pineview Road.
Pineview Drive.
Drive, okay.
That's what I have.
Okay, thank you. Which is requesting permission to construct a new structure on the existing foundation footprint without expansion, which is represented to create a 13-foot reduction in the front north setback and approximately seven-foot reduction in the rear yard, which is the east setback. Allowing a 37-foot approximately front yard along the northern property line and approximately 43-foot rear yard setback along the eastern property line rather than the required 50-foot setbacks. I'm moving to approve that variance with the condition that it only apply it only applied to construction on the existing footprint of the current foundation. This is based on the following findings of fact, that there are exceptional circumstances or conditions applicable to the property that do not apply generally to the other properties or classes of use in the same district. In particular, the lot size is nonconforming, being nine point nine five acres instead of the full one acres as required by the zoning. The septic system location precludes building in a conforming manner. And there's a twenty-seven foot elevation change, which also limits the available building space. We are also finding that we we realize that the existing foundation is nonconforming and predates this property owner's acquisition of the property. And the best finding we were able to make is that the property was built in the nineteen sixties and at least the current zoning ordinance didn't come in until two thousand and three. So that's that's a finding number one regarding exceptional circumstances. Number two, the variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of a substantial property right because the property is experiencing moisture problems and heat problems being dealt slab on grade. And this will allow the property to be substantially improved. Number three, the granting of the variance will not be materially detrimental to the public welfare or materially injurious to the property or improvements in the zone or district in which the property is located. And in accordance with that, I would note that there are letters of support from three of the neighbors, including the two adjacent neighbors who would be most affected by the property change. The granting of the variance will not adversely affect the objectives of the master plan of the township. And we find that absent exceptional circumstances, which would otherwise result in substantial injustice, the circumstances on which the variance is based do not result from the actions of the applicant or his predecessors entitled. So based on those findings, I would move to approve the variance with the limitation that it applies only to construction of a structure on the existing foundation footprint.
Second.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor by Ms. Remi seconded by Mr. Walsh to approve the requested variance upon the condition that it only applies to construction of the a building on the current foundation and for the reasons stated by Ms. Remi. Any discussion on that motion?
I just want to, yeah, clarify, as Ms. Remi said, on the existing foundation footprint.
Yeah, on the existing foundation footprint.
I support that motion.
Okay. Call the roll. Off, yes. Culberson?
Yes.
Remi?
Yes.
Walsh? Yes. Kengas?
Yes.
Okay, motion is approved for as requested on the existing foundation. Good luck giving the statements. Okay, next item on the agenda.
I've never seen that guy before in my life.
Okay. Next item is unfinished business of which I know of none. Does anybody have a peculiar knowledge? Okay, we'll move along. Okay, approval of the minutes. First of all, let's take the easy ones. The ZBA minutes of February seventeenth, March seventeenth, April twenty-first, and May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two, all of which are quote no meaning unquote minutes.
I move approval.
Support.
Moved by Ms. Culberson, supported by Ms. Remi to approve the no meeting minutes of those dates. So I'll call the roll, please. Off, yes. Culberson?
Yes.
Remi?
Yes.
Walsh, yes. Kengas?
Yes.
All right, they're approved. And then we do have one set of minutes for January twentieth, twenty twenty-two. That's a long time ago. And I was, I was, I was, I went through this, you know, I'm trying to remember this. There's, we've got to get some sort of method to approve these minutes quicker rather than let them wait because it's just, it's hard to remember. And I have a problem because on one little thing, I think, because I looked at some of the handwritten notes I'd made, which I brought with me. We can talk about them in a minute. First of all, does anybody have any corrections? Well, let me start because I they're all pretty much the same and they're very minor. On page two, the third line from the bottom, it says about seven years ago, the Hakes had left the letter in the property owner's mailbox. Well, Hakes should appropriately be capital H A K E S with no apostrophe. And similarly, on page four, eighth line from the top, it says the Hakes home and the neighbor's home. If I suppose you'd get away with the apostrophe S there in a way, but technically it should be H A K E S apostrophe. Since there are two Hakes. Minor, yes, I agree. It's minor. And my only other notation is on the motion by Mr. Shields on the page six, which says that there are some exceptional circumstances or conditions applicable to the property, and it's described there. All I can say is I I looked at my notes and they say no exception. I suspect my notes are wrong. And I I think that I have a vague recollection of Mr. Shields referencing those items that that he talked about. So I'm going to assume I am, I just made a mistake in what I wrote down.
Yeah, we talked extensively about the conditions on the property between the pond up front slope.
Okay, well, then I must be wrong and the minutes appear to be correct. Then with those two extremely minor changes, that's the only ones I have. So I would solicit a motion to approve them with the very minor changes.
Support.
Moved by Mr. Walsh, supported by Ms. Culberson. Any discussion? Call the roll. Off, yes. Culberson?
Yes.
Remi?
Yes.
Walsh?
Yes. I think you have to abstain.
Yes.
Wasn't there.
All right, then let's skip to the next item on the agenda, which is other. Do we have a claim commission liaison report, Ms. Culberson?
Actually, I have a couple things. One, you will soon be getting an email, and I wanted to introduce the Environmental Sustainability Task Force, which is has been appointed by the Planning Commission, has been working since last summer and have, there are five different working groups. And as a part of our our work, we're starting community engagement on some of those goals and strategies. And we were fortunate enough to be selected by a CEES Masters Project Team to help us. A CEES, it's the University of Michigan School of, oh boy, the Environment and, oh boy, and Sustainability. The old Nat School of Natural Resources is one of the great ones among us. And so we have a team of five students and a professor who's advising them. And they've come up with a community engagement strategy for us. And what we're asking is that all the boards and commissions, one, they and they also have a survey that they've they've done. And is, you'll be getting an email from from them and asking you to complete the survey. And then also, if you have some networks of business members, other residents within SIO, to please forward the survey to them. It's an anonymous survey, and they're going to be compiling, and it's to get feedback from on those sustainability goals and also observations about you know, impact, climate impacts that they've been experiencing. So they are doing also some focus groups with farmers, the business community. And we're hoping to get, it it's also going in the newsletter. They're going to have a poster up and there's a QR code, you know, for people. And they're going to analyze, there are some, you know, questions at the beginning, just to figure out what the the range of people and where they kind of live in the township, so we can hopefully get a wide wide response, a diverse response from within the community. And then we'll be taking those and compiling them and hopefully coming up with a environmental sustainability climate action plan that'll kind of move through the planning commission and into the trustees. So that's, that's the big thing.
Anything else?
Um, the other thing is we are, there's going to be an updated PUD ordinance.
Again, could you explain what that is?
Planned unit development.
Oh, PUD.
PUD, yes. I know sometimes it's hard with the mask, right?
Yeah, I know.
Yeah. And and what we're, you know, looking at, I I think what we're trying to reinforce are increasing densities along in the sewer service area and trying to do more protective strategies of agricultural and natural features. So trying to work on that. We also have an EV charging ordinance that'll be coming and looking at the tree ordinance, because we've had a couple of projects that we've not, we we feel like we can do a better job of protecting some of the, you know, larger extensive tree canopies as projects are coming through. And there are a bunch of other little ordinances, but those are kind of, those are the big, big ones that we're looking at.
I actually have a couple comments on that. Because I I'm also the delegate from SIO Township to the Washington Regional Resource Management Authority. And I was and me and and the alternate Mark Perry had no idea that the Environmental Sustainability Group had anything to do with recycling until we got contact. And not to be, not to burden you with all the details of it, but we had actually done an extensive evaluation of recycling, what was available to the township through GFI, our GFL, and through the Home Toxic Center. What was available at the Ellsworth Road facility, what was available at the Jackson Road recycling Ann Arbor facility, and did a lot of work on. And submitted a pretty, pretty lengthy report to Mr. Hathaway. And the next thing you know, he asked us to meet with recycling Ann Arbor to try to do something about trying to fill in the the emptiness of the drop-off that we had here in the township years ago. And we the long and short of which was that we felt that we're getting most of the stuff from GFL anyway, and the other stuff was available there anyway. And then we find out that your committee people have been talking to recycling Ann Arbor for a completely different set of things.
Okay.
And frankly, it was a little bit.
It sounds like you have an amazing resource. And so would you be open to the CEES students doing an interview with you and forwarding us that work that you did?
We forwarded to Mr. Hathaway already. It's it's not recent either. It was done.
Prior to the contract?
Yeah, we, we, yeah.
I mean,
It's not hard to do. It's easy.
I'm just a goodness. We found a lot of resources that we didn't know existed, so.
Well, my, my main problem is not that. I mean cooperate, but I I didn't know that your sustainability thing had anything to do with recycling Ann Arbor and the drop-off students. Well, we know, we already did this. And anyway, we can talk about it later.
No, but I'd love for them, one, if you can, if you have a digital copy somewhere of that report. And then I'll have the CEES students contact you because they are interviewing some people that, you know, have, you know, done made kind of contributions like that. I think they'd be very interested in your your work. And then we can also incorporate that into some of the goals. Because one, one thing that was really interesting that we discovered is recycle Ann Arbor, because they took over the old Calvert's. And they've also purchased some land there that they wanted to, you know, evolve and do.
Big question, what do they want to do with that land? That much land? What happens if they want to do a MRF?
Well, I don't think they want to duplicate the MRF. They want, I think what they, what they stated to us was to create a a a sort of a business park dedicated to businesses that are making things out of recycled products and update the construction recycling because they're only capturing something like twelve percent of the materials that are coming into that particular drop-off location. So.
When you say they're only capturing twelve percent, the the rest just gets.
Well, it's construction materials.
And they don't have a a way of really sorting it if it comes in combined.
It's, yeah, it is difficult, but.
Anyway, it sounds like you have a good deal of of data that we could use.
We have a lot of data, actually.
Well, great.
Okay, anyway.
And and part of this is we haven't met either, you know.
I realize that.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, so any big projects coming up? We've got the big project Jackson Road. They cleared that out. And it's changing the landscape already.
Yeah, that, well, actually, we have.
Pickleball facility or?
No, no, that's down towards Ann Arbor Arms.
Oh, okay.
Isn't it?
The.
Pickleball, pickleball?
Yeah, well, yeah, the permanent one, yes, is by Ann Arbor Arms.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then.
No, I was talking, you go down Baker Road through the truck stops and T-bones at Jackson, right? That property right there, sort of a little bit to the left.
And what are they doing there?
Well, it's a big project.
And and then I think there's also residences.
Uh, it's commercial residential. I haven't been following it in detail, but it's it's substantial.
And then there's another, we do have the Woodview Final PUD will be going to the trustees, and that one's the one that they, it was approved and they discovered the Buick and Mercury and modified that to.
Where's this one again?
Um, it's it's off of Jackson Road, near Baker. Um, it's, it's off of Jackson Road, um, near, um, Baker.
Oh, you mean, oh, it's actually on, on Baker then, is?
It, it, the access is, is, it's right where Baker kind of T-bones into Jackson.
It's the one you were just talking about.
It.
Oh, that's, oh, okay, alright, yeah.
And, um.
I was gonna say, let's not have.
That one, they're actually redoing their, um, they up changed their, their PUD. Um, to deal with the Rookery. Um, and then there's, um, Heritage Woods. Um, which is, um, Baker and Marshall. Um, and that one's kind of, uh, working its way through, that's, I think, Stone Cold Preliminary, yeah. Um, and then we have another one that is, um, went through preliminary and is going into final, and that is. Um, the old, is it the American Roach site?
Sure.
Where the three, there, and that one's gonna be an interesting, uh, proposal that has. BMW Jaguar and, no, BMW, uh, Mercedes. And Land Rover, and.
The most expensive ones.
But their public benefit is.
I'm just kidding.
Oh, they are, right, um, they're, they're public benefit, one of the public benefits is gonna be. Um, and we're hoping if DTE cooperates, that's a big hope. Um, six, uh, up to six, um, of the DC charging stations, it's gonna be like a charging park. Um, which of course benefits them, but, you know, it is a, a benefit to the, the township, and it's close enough to the highway. Um, so, and they are, um. We've been discussing, uh, um, a net zero with, um, renewable purchases, they've, they are, they will have a, an extensive solar array. Um, as well as with the charging. Um, so that's, that's an interesting project, a lot of native landscaping, stormwater. Um, and then Crossroads is coming back as a, which is at the corner of Liberty and Wagner, um, adjacent to the.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, that one's coming back as a, um. A higher, high-density residential, a higher-density residential.
I thought it was, yeah, last time I heard.
It was an office.
Like, yeah.
It was supposed to be a big office thing.
Yeah, and it, I, the, uh, their whole market piece for offices, I guess, um. Really tanked because of, uh, there's a, a, an awful lot of office space, um, available, so.
You got enough water and sewer for something?
That's, and, and that's one of the things, it's, it's coming back as a pretty limb, and that's one of the things that they'll be saying, it, it does, from the analysis that we got. There is adequate sewer in that location. So we'll see, uh, that has to be verified, of course, because they just came down with their, you know, unit numbers and things like that, so.
And what do they do with that intersection? For the traffic?
Yes, well, but they do have to do a traffic impact state, uh, you know, study.
Wow. That's gonna be, uh, interesting to see.
Because it's a big construction going on just up the road on, off of Liberty.
Yeah, the water, which is, I don't know how many units that is, but. Oh, the other, uh, site, oh, what is that called, SIO, I, there's somebody in a little.
That's not little, that's, yeah, that's.
No, it's a, it's a, but that's a single family.
Oh, at, at Liberty and Z, I thought they were, are they also going to put a?
They were doing Liberty and Wagner as well.
Oh, that would be great.
Yeah, and, and then I think the other. I think, yeah, the other, um, I think, uh, planning, and it, it dovetails in with the environmental sustainability, we did get the planning commission to get a memo. And if you're interested in, uh, you might want to read it, it was in the packet for the. Um, meeting on Monday, so the thirteenth. It was from the consultant. From that, that had been working on the Galman Plume, and, uh, sort of a synopsis of, you know, what we know, and.
Is that for the planning commission, you mean?
Yeah, and, and sort of looking at what. Um, one of the discussions that we had, and we asked, uh, Knights of Columbus to do was. Typically, they might do hydro geological studies, like at the final, um, planning, PUD planning stage. Where we asked them, and this memo supports doing that. Um, and what sort of specifications doing it early, um, because. It's in an area that could affect, um, the, the migration of the plume, so. Um, I think that's a, you know, and that is a concern of an awful lot of residents, um. So. I guess those are the.
That's it, nothing else?
I'm sure there are other things, but there have been a bunch of little ones.
Is there gonna be more, uh, development of broadband for some of the, you know, farther out places of SIO Township?
You know, that is, um, that came up in the. The Washington County is also doing their climate plan, and that is one of the, um, that's. Uh, there's funding for it coming from the state, and there's, and I think, um. The county is also trying to, um, dovetail that in, because obviously there's an equity issue there. Um, I don't know, I haven't heard of anything that, that, the, the township specifically is doing around that matter, but we certainly have a. You know, some holes.
Yeah, because it, it's, you, you, you might be a little bit surprised. You guys live closer in, I think, but out of my ways. There's really little in the way of broadband, and, and. It's pretty sad, because they've been talking about it for fifteen years.
Really?
Oh, yeah, it's been. Exposed of money out there, left and right, we don't see anything.
Whose bucket is that in?
Gotta do something about that. I'm, I'm.
Well, put that, and, and seriously.
I still have to do things through a.
Oh, a modem? I'm saying, that's way.
Put the telephone into that cradle and. Takes eighteen minutes for a page to go through.
We looked into getting cable to, of our speeds and, uh, our lane, and got quotes of between thirty thousand and seventy-five thousand dollars to do one house.
Wow.
Uh, yeah, I mean.
Yeah.
Well, I've got fiber optic, I know it's going down our line, but it's dedicated to a cell phone tower that's over the next township, I was thinking, well, why don't I tap into that?
Huh.
But, uh, I, I, then I've heard rumors that there's some additional fiber optic going in along Liberty, I don't know.
Interesting.
Haven't heard it, that's why I thought I'd ask.
State of fiber.
Okay, anyway, any more ZBA business? Okay, well, thanks, Jen, I appreciate it.
Yes, and, and look for the, that email from the C's team, and I will have them contact to, you know, do, uh, an interview with you.
Well, we'll, we'll do it with me and Mark Perry.
Okay, Mark Perry, okay, great.
Alright, I'll solicit a motion to, uh, adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Ramey and supported by Mr. Kangas. Uh, call the roll, off, yes, Culbertson?
Yes.
Ramey?
Yes.
Walsh, yes, Kangas?
Yes.
Okay, meeting is adjourned.